Good afternoon and thank you for attending the Working Committee First Cannabis Town Hall Meeting. I'm going to have the Board introduce themselves and the consultants, and then I'll provide some guidelines and some housekeeping rules. I'll start to my far left.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Vaughn Norris, City Manager for the City of Hawthorne, coming out this afternoon.
I'm Greg McLean. I'm the interim Community Development Director for the City of Hawthorne.
I'm Robert Kim. I'm the City Attorney for the City of Hawthorne.
Councilmember Reyes English and Chair of the Cannabis Working Committee.
Sergeant Kenny Craig, Hawthorne Police Department.
I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson, and I am the Director of EJMA Planning and Development.
My name is Toni Forge. I'm an attorney, and I'm also a consultant and owner of Four Leaf Consulting.
Thank you again for attending, and before we proceed, I want to just give a little housekeeping rules. I'd like everyone to please silence their phones during the proceedings. If you must take a call, please take your call outside of this room. There's restrooms in the back, and if please, to the Board and to the consultants, please address the Chair to be recognized. I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting with the overview, which is here on the overhead, and I'll pass now the overview presentation to our consultants.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As I mentioned, I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson, and I will start off by giving the overview of our presentation today. We have a host of topics that we will be talking about today, including the introduction of Proposition 64, which allowed for legislation and regulation of cannabis in California. We will then go into a city legislative timeline where we will go over all of the legislative acts the city has taken thus far for cannabis, as well as look forward into what those next actions or steps in the cannabis process will be. We will also take a deep dive into the Let's Talk Cannabis program and campaign that it was put out by the California Department of Public Health. There's lots of facts and Mythbusters that we're going to go over today from the state of California, and then we will talk about the licensing process overview and proposed process for the City of Hawthorne. And finally, we will end with our robust question and answer section, where we will allow any residents to ask questions. We have mics on both sides of the room, so you will have an opportunity to ask any questions. Those questions will be recorded, and then also we will put them on the website. So if you miss a presentation, you can always follow along on the city website, where we will have all of the questions in our FAQ that you may have seen. It's now live, and we will continue to update that as we go through all four workshops. They are also recorded, and they will be broadcasted on the city YouTube channel, and I believe the city cable channel as well, so if you miss any, you can catch up there. And again, as always, you can email the cannabis email and ask any questions, and those two will be answered and put on the website for full transparency. Before we get into state regulations, I'm going to pass it on to Toni. She has a wealth of knowledge on cannabis regulation at this point, and will be able to go through a deep dive of the California regulations. And I just want to welcome you, Toni. Thank you, and I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks for coming out today. I know it's a Saturday, but it's good to see everybody here. Again, my name is Toni Forge. I'm a cannabis lawyer and consultant and owner of Four Leaf Consulting, and I have been in the cannabis space since 2016. Before that, I'm a 30-year litigator and corporate counsel. I worked in dot-com in early 2000s, and I headed up litigation for major Fortune 500 companies and a lot of insurance companies. And so regulations are really my thing, and I kind of just got into cannabis through a friend. I decided I was burnt out from corporate law and litigation, and a friend of mine said, you know, this is an emerging market, much like dot-com in the early 2000s. And in fact, it is. So I'm excited to be here with you today. So before we get into the meat, like Ebony said, we want to give you some type of history of how we got here in California. How did cannabis become legal? So in 1996, we started with Prop 215 and the Compassionate Use Act. And that basically said, there was a lot of chronically ill people, this was especially after the AIDS epidemic, who used cannabis in order to help their medical conditions. And so what Prop 215 said is basically, if you have a medical recommendation from your doctor, you can use cannabis without fear of criminal prosecution. That's the main thing. Cannabis then and now is still federally illegal. It's a Schedule I drug, and this really helped those caregivers, as well as patients, avoid any type of criminal liability. Fast forward nine years later, we have the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, and this was happening in 2015, and this put some meat around cannabis regulation. This is when the conversation started, said, yep, we're going to have cannabis regulation. It also said, yes, we're going to do it for profit before it wasn't. I know you've seen all those collectives think back in the day that were on the street, but now this is going to have a regulatory framework. And also, the state said, we're going to develop a Bureau of Cannabis Control in order to help with that regulatory framework. Then we go to 2016, and all of you remember Prop 64. And Prop 64 did a couple of things. Number one, it said, if your 21 years are over, you can use, possess, and grow cannabis for your own adult use. You can have one ounce of flour, you can have eight ounces of cannabis concentrate, or six plants you can grow per residence at your residence. And so that was one thing that Prop 64 did. Another thing that it did, it gave the state an opportunity to regulate and tax the retail part of cannabis, the manufacturing, the growing. And so again, it called for business licenses, and it also said, localities, you can do the same thing. You can regulate, and you can also tax cannabis for recreational use or adult use. The other thing it gave was, again, standards and regulatory framework around the whole notion of cannabis business licenses. And so we see the results from Prop 64. Statewide, it was majority wanted this, and in LA County, you can see, it was overwhelming. And this, again, are some of the Senate bills and the Assembly bills about cannabis regulation. One thing I want to add is, even though Prop 64 was voted on in 2016, it did not take effect, and it wasn't implemented in terms of business licensing and such until 2018. And so from 2017 on, we had the state developing regulations, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Next slide. And so here is your own Hawthorne city guidelines and how you got to where you are now. In 2016, it was the 45-day moratorium on non-medical marijuana uses, and that was extended. We have the zoning that was amended by the Planning Commission in 2017 to restrict the control and use of non-medical marijuana, cannabis. And then in 2021, we had your Measure CC, which basically said that cannabis can be taxed, their business tax attached to this in the City of Hawthorne. And then where we are now with the Working Committee and with you all doing community outreach, trying to educate the community about cannabis in the state of California. Okay, yeah, that should be your business tax measure, it's not measure K, I think, and C. Overwhelmingly, 61, over 61% of you wanted a cannabis business tax. 38.51 said no. And so we're going now, is this Mythbusters that we're going to? I wanted to put this slide in because I think, I know I had to educate my family, because I am from a very Catholic family who couldn't believe I was getting into cannabis, and my mother just thought, you'll be able to smoke it all over the place, and I'm going to continuously smell like cannabis even though I don't smoke. But I wanted to put this slide in, so gives you an opportunity how cannabis is regulated, and hopefully give you some more information about this. Next slide. In order to have cannabis medicinal use, you have to be over 18 years of age, and you have to have a doctor's recommendation. For adult use or recreational use, you have to be 21 years or older, and you don't need a recommendation by a doctor. You can only use cannabis, smoke, ingest, on your private property. You cannot do it in public. I know we see people doing it in public, but legally, you cannot do it in public. If you have, if you're renting a home or such, you need to really make sure with the landlord that you can, in fact, smoke cannabis. A lot of times, they will not let you. If there's a smoking ordinance in a particular city or in a particular building that says you cannot use tobacco, then you cannot use cannabis as well. You can grow cannabis plants if you are at least 21 years of age. You can have six plants, again, per residence. You can also have, like I said, an ounce of flour you can possess, or eight ounces of concentrate. Now, if you are a medicinal cannabis user, you can have more than one ounce, you can have eight ounces of cannabis, you can also have eight ounces of concentrate, you can have six plants and 12 immature plants. That's not a mature, fully functioning, all-the-way-bloomed-out cannabis plant. And you cannot drive with an open container of cannabis. It has to be closed, and I don't know if any of you have been to dispensaries, but there's child safety caps on them, they're very much buttoned up and closed. If you have an open container, you need to put it in your trunk where it's locked. You can be stopped by the police if you are under the influence, the same as if you were drunk driving. So again, you cannot consume cannabis in public places like restaurants, hotels, bars. You cannot smoke where it's illegal to smoke tobacco, you can't smoke cannabis. You cannot smoke or use or ingest cannabis within a thousand feet of a school, daycare center, or youth center where children are present. You cannot use or possess cannabis on federal lands like National Park. Again, that's because it's federally illegal still, and it's a Schedule I drug. You cannot take cannabis across state lines, that's interstate, and again, I don't care if you're going from legal state to legal state. TSA has been pretty lax here lately, but again, still illegal to do that. You cannot drive, again, with an open container of cannabis.
We know that there are a lot of public safety concerns around cannabis, and as an urban planner, you know, we've been working really close with communities and our city planning department here, but we wanted to talk about some of those, some of those concerns around safety. And we looked at various cities in states that allow cannabis and have allowed cannabis for adult use for, for some time, so that we can pull some statistics on what their crimes are looking like, since most cities in California, especially Southern California, have just gotten their programs off the ground in the last, you know, handful of years, and even some of them are still developing. So we saw that studies indicate that recreational use of cannabis in the industry has not caused increase in violent crimes, and as well as if you have a well-regulated industry, it actually, we can see decreased crime rates, which makes sense, because we want to have an industry, all of these industries that have any heavy use of manufacturing materials, hazardous waste materials, any of those things right now, besides cannabis, would be regulated. So it's an effort for all regulatory bodies to be very much involved in cannabis and help regulate that process to ensure that the production of cannabis products are safe and available for everyone to consume. During the first year of the implementation of the Amendment of 64 in Denver, they experienced a 2.2% decrease in violent crime rates. And so that's pretty significant, because a lot of times we hear outcry about cannabis causing crimes or increasing crime rates, and we're just not seeing that across the We see in Washington State that the violent crimes actually decreased 10% between 2011 and 2014. So that's a pretty significant decrease in crime. And one of those things we've, we've heard a lot of is because we're not seeing the criminalization of cannabis. And we can talk about the War on Drugs, and I think we have some further slides that we discussed that a bit, but the War, the War on Drugs has increased a lot of fear around cannabis, and also individuals in the community aren't, don't feel safe around cannabis or cannabis use because of those actions on the War on Drugs. So again, we're seeing, once it's regulated, once we have all of the regulatory agencies involved, and you will see shortly here that there are quite a few state and local agencies that are involved in cannabis, and even on the development side, some federal agencies are involved as well in issuing these permits of large cultivation sites outdoor. So we see a lot of that happen in Northern California, but it is important to mention because we do have a lot of eyes on the cannabis, on cannabis policy, and as well as cannabis production and sales. So going into the regulation of cannabis, originally, there were several agencies that oversaw cannabis. There was the Cal Cannabis Program under CDFA, which is the California Department of Food and Agriculture. They oversaw all the licensing for cultivation sites. So if you were growing cannabis on a commercial level, meaning you, you are growing it to sell it commercially in the commercial market, you have to get a license from the state, and that, originally, that was through the Cal Cannabis Program. Manufacturing was overseen, licensing was overseen by the California Department of Public Health, and the Bureau of Cannabis Control was developed to oversee the licensing of distribution activities, retail activities, and testing activities. As of last year, as, as, at the end of 2021, the government, the governor consolidated all of these agencies into one new department, which is the Department of Cannabis Control. So you may see in your research, CDFA, or Cal Cannabis, or CDPH, I like to have this slide in the presentation, so that if you are doing some research, you understand that all of those agencies under, were responsible for licensing previously, but they're now all consolidated under the Department of Cannabis Control. So if you're getting a cultivation license, manufacturing, distribution, you're still now applying under the Department of Cannabis Control. If you're looking up licenses, if you're trying to see if a facility is a licensed facility, if a store is a licensed store, this is where you're going to go, the Department of Cannabis Control. You also can report any suspicious or any illegal activity. So if you know that there is a store in your neighborhood that does not have a license, which they shouldn't, because you haven't issued any in the city, you can actually report that anonymously to the Department of Cannabis Control, and they absolutely do take those, all of those requests very seriously, and they do investigate. So there is a list of regulations, we're going to go through a good number of them, that each of these departments or sub-agencies within the department oversees and regulates, but ultimately, if you have any concerns, they will be addressed by the state, and those, those companies are investigated. So I usually like to start at the very beginning, because there's always people in the community that aren't even sure what's happening with cannabis. I know when I first started getting involved in cannabis policy work, I had no idea what all of these things even meant. So I always like to give the state definitions of what's included in each license activity. So the first one is cultivation, and that's a mix of small, medium, or large operations, and they do vary quite a bit. And you, they have mixed light sites, indoor and outdoor, and we'll show some pictures of those for you today, specialty and, specialty cottage and nurseries. Those are the types of licenses that you can get at the state level, depending on the type of life, the type of cultivation activities you will be conducting. But ultimately, cultivation is any activity involving planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading, or trimming of cannabis. So you might have businesses that come in and they just do trimming. Well, that still requires a cultivation license. And we'll go through those cultivation types, so that you can have visuals. The first one here is an indoor cultivation site, so it's just as it seems, most of the activities will happen indoors. So that means you're going to have a warehouse with various agricultural activities happening, cultivation, as we just said, we just defined. All of those activities have to be within your premises, which is indoors. So you will have, all of your lighting is manufactured with lights. It's no direct sunlight on your plants. The next major category is outdoor cultivation, which is the complete opposite. Just as it says, it's an outdoor farm of cannabis plants. You're going to see most of these in Northern California. Southern California cities don't have a lot of land for outdoor cultivation. There are some counties that do allow them. Riverside County has some outdoor cultivation activities allowed. Some cities allow nurseries to be outdoors, but most, mostly, you're going to see indoor cultivation in the LA region. The next one is mixed light cultivation. You'll see some of these types of sites, again, in, mostly in the county areas, but they're, think of a greenhouse, that's what mixed light is. It's both sunlight as well as some type of lamp or light UV ray coming through, so combination. So you have both sunlight, and you have some manufactured light, and most of that, most of the time, that's under the umbrella of a greenhouse. The next license type is manufacturing, and that is what, those, that's the process that we use to create cannabis products. So we use, you'll usually hear cannabis and cannabis products. Cannabis is the flower, it's usually smoked, but there are a lot of manufactured products that are used that are not smoked, such as edibles, so infusion, there's also topicals and tinctures. All of those products are manufactured. So the, a licensee that conducts the production, preparation, propagation, and compounding of cannabis or cannabis products either directly or indirectly, or by extraction methods, or independently by a means of chemical synthesis, all of these things are considered manufacturing. And then a person that does any type of infusion. So if you don't extract yourself, but you're using some type of extraction process, third-party, and using those products to infuse, let's say, food, that's, you, you need a manufacturing license, and the person that you're buying the manufactured product from also needs a, needs a license. And here is what a cannabis lab looks like. It looks like any other food production lab. It's very similar in nature, they're regulated some of the same ways. So this is pretty much just a typical manufacturing lab. It looks a lot like a food production lab. The next one is distribution. Distribution often gets confused with delivery, so I want to break that down a little bit. Distribution is business-to-business, so think wholesale. So when we're talking about distribution licenses, it's one business giving a product that they've produced to another business. A lot of times, we'll see that happen directly from a cultivator to a manufacturer, and then, and then to a distributor, who will then put the products into a retail space. So retailers can only buy products from a licensed distributor, which means that the state can control everything that goes into a store, essentially. They make sure it's tested, there has to be appropriate labels and packaging, all of those things gets, get regulated by the Department of Cannabis Regulation at this, or I'm sorry, the DCC, Department of Cannabis Regulation, so, of Cannabis Control. So all of that is happening before you even see it in a store, and the distributor is the gatekeeper for that. There's first and third-party distribution. So first-party distribution is if, let's say, I'm a cultivator, and I want to sell my products directly to a store, then I have to have a distribution license for that. If I wanted to do third-party, for example, I sell my products as a cultivator to a third-party distributor who then puts them in the store, you have to have, that distributor has to have a third-party distro license. So there are different types of licenses at the state for each category, and based on your activities or what you plan to do in your business, the state will tell you which of those licenses you need to have in order to conduct those activities. But distribution will always be a wholesale game, it is always business-to-business. And here is a picture of what a distro company looks like. It looks just like any other distro company, like Amazon, a bunch of boxes. All of those boxes do have cannabis in them. It's nothing exciting with the distro business, it's pretty benign, but I like to show it because a lot of times, there's misconception about distribution and delivery. So distribution, you are going to see larger orders, there's no regulations on the amount that you can possess or distribute if you have a license. If you do not have a license, that's still very illegal to distribute cannabis commercially. The next license type is a testing lab. So a lot of cities allow one or more cannabis license type. Testing seems to be one that a lot of cities feel very comfortable with, because again, it's just like any other lab, you have to be accredited by accreditation body, and you have to, it has to be independent from all other persons involved in commercial cannabis activities. So if you own a testing lab, or a testing lab license, or interest in a testing lab license, you cannot then hold any other licenses. So all of the testing labs are completely independent from the industry in that way. You can't have any crossover. The other license types, you can. You can hold licenses in all, in the entire vertical, you can own a cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, you can hold all of those licenses, but you cannot hold any of those licenses if you hold any interest in a testing lab. So the state has gone, you know, made the significant effort to make sure that all testing is independent, and it is overseen by the state. So a testing lab includes any facility or entity that, that offers or performs tests of cannabis or cannabis products, which is required by the state in order for your, your products to get to market. Finally, the hot topic item is always retail. It's the fanciest license. It, it's the one that everyone sees. A lot of these other licenses are kind of in the background, they're in warehouses, you don't know if they're there, but retail is customer-facing, so you will be able to see it, it's, they're open to the public. And retail includes any sale and deliver, and/or delivery of cannabis or cannabis products to customers. So when we're talking about the two types of retail, we have storefront and non-storefront. Non-storefront is what we commonly know as a delivery. So anytime a delivery happens in the city or anywhere else, that, that person or entity must hold a retail license, both at the local municipality in which it operates, as well as the state. So it is a two-part process for licensure. And then, of course, storefront retail proper, or storefront retail licenses are what you, we commonly know as, or previously knew as dispensaries. We now call them storefronts or commercial retail stores, but ultimately, dispensaries are what we, we, what falls under the storefront category. And here is some images of some regulated retail shops. They look very different than what we were all used to seeing previously with 215. A lot of shops came through that process, and there wasn't a, a lot of regulation on what they needed to do to be operating. So if you've ever been to an unlicensed cannabis retail store, it's going to be very different than a licensed retail store. Cities also are doing a great job at mandating that companies come into their city and provide beautification efforts with their development. So if you're a city that has a lot of vacant buildings, that has a lot of open storefronts, this is a great economic initiative to get them open and operating, and you can do, you can do some of that beautification work through policy. And so that's one of the things that we're going to talk about next, is that ordinance development, but those are the things we're talking about in the Working Committee and with the Planning Department, and developing an ordinance that will both help with economic initiative, the economic, economic initiatives of the city, but also make sure that we provide those development standards that are necessary for retail stores to come into your city. And then there's the fun one, it's the microbusiness. You don't see a ton of them, but they do exist, and a microbusiness is just a combination of some of these businesses. Early in the licensing process, the state used microbusinesses for those operators who had small operations but did multiple activities, so they, you have to do at least three. So let's say you have a retail storefront, but you also want to grow or manufacture in the back in small batches. Something like that would allow you to do so with a microbusiness license. You also will see what we call integrated licenses, meaning you hold independent licenses in the same facility. So you might have a cultivation facility upstairs, and then your distribution and manufacturing. and then your distribution and manufacturing somewhere else in the facility downstairs or adjacent to. But you can do multiple cannabis activities in one building. There are regulations, though, that you have to comply with in order to do that. You may also get a micro-business license if you do three or more of these activities. The next part of the presentation, we're gonna dive into the licensing process. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about the difference between state and local licensing. Initially, there were a lot of concerns, I think, at the city level about land use authority and who has it in these types of situations where you have an emerging industry come and you really don't have a place for them yet in your zoning ordinance. And so the state regulations, Prop 64 said, hey, cities, you have to do something. You have to either allow cannabis or not allow cannabis, but you have to, you have to make some type of legislative action. So a lot of cities did. Some of them allowed cannabis right away. Some of them said, hey, we're gonna put a moratorium on this, like your city, until we have a good understanding of what this looks like. So at the state level, we have cultivation licenses. We have manufacturing. We have testing. We have retail. We have distribution. And there are subcategories within there. And then there's even subcategories within the subcategories. But the state will tell you what you, what license type you need based on what activity you're gonna have. The local licensing process is a little bit more broad. Instead of having all of the different nuanced types of licenses, there's usually an overarching license, for example, testing, and then what you can do. The regulations on what you can do as a testing operator. Same thing for distribution, deliver, or retailer, delivery, cultivation, manufacturing. You'll get a old umbrella. And then the regulations within the ordinance will tell you what you can and cannot do, or how you can operate. So we have two different licensing structures, but they work, they work together. So you cannot operate cannabis with just a city license, nor can you operate cannabis with just a state. It's a joint regulatory permit. So you have both your city and your state. You need both things in order to operate legally in California. So there are about 20 cities in the Los Angeles, greater Los Angeles region that have allowed cannabis to come in and be regulated. I say "regulated" because it's really important to understand that the cities that are regulating cannabis are doing so in an effort to regulate this business. Otherwise, you're gonna continue to have businesses that are unregulated, that are a direct threat to your regulated industry. I know a lot of folks have had questions about what's happening at the state level with taxes and how that's hurting the cannabis industry. And one of those reasons is because we do not have enough cities regulating cannabis, regulating unlicensed cannabis. So we wanna make sure that we have the upper hand when we're talking about cannabis coming into the city and being able to regulate those business practices. So here's a list of some of those cities that allow cannabis right now. Avalon, the small little island, allows cannabis. Bell, Bell Flower. Carson, El Monte, Huntington Park. The city of Los Angeles is a, a, probably a really big city that has a lot of licenses. They have over 200 retail licenses alone. Same thing with Long Beach. Very robust cannabis program. Highly regulated by a lot of different agencies. The city of West Hollywood is really moving forward to kind of be the cannabis center of Southern California. They have allowed several retail, retail license. They allow consumption lounges. They have a lot of very progressive views on cannabis. And they are even opening now for another, I believe it's like 40 licenses additional. So they are really welcoming cannabis in their city. I think it's important when we talk about cannabis to talk about social equity and social equity programs. The social equity program in Los Angeles is fairly robust as well, I would say. The city has made great efforts to make sure that those who have been, have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, particularly with cannabis and cannabis crimes and offenses, get an opportunity to participate in this newly regulatory business. And so they have a lot of business support for these individuals that can come in, that come in with possibly criminal convictions or they've just lived in one of the targeted areas for a very long time. There's different criteria to become a social equity applicant. But ultimately, once you are identified as a social equity applicant, screened and you're eligible for these resources, these business, these smaller businesses get resources from the city on technical assistance, as well as priority processing at the city and the state. When we talk about social equity, there's, a lot of times, communities are confused and concerned about who's coming in, right? And so we wanted to show, this is, this is Gorilla RX. This is a social equity business in the city of Los Angeles on Crenshaw. And as you can see, it's a very well-maintained store. It's absolutely beautiful. And the owner does a great job really staying in compliance, putting forth a lot of effort to do community outreach. She does a lot of community efforts in the, in the community, in the local community. So I wanted to make sure that we showcase some of these social equity businesses because they are very well-run, just as a normal business would be. I also wanted to take a moment to show the inside of a store because a lot of folks have never been inside of a regulated cannabis retail store before. You can see there is very professional packaging here. Companies spend millions of dollars on packaging every year to just meet the state requirements. So it isn't back in our 215 days where you had a POG and flower inside. They're a POG container, those medical containers. We don't have that anymore. Everything is tamper-resistant, child-resistant. And there is a long list of things for your packaging that you have to identify on your packaging. For example, the dosing. So that's really important with cannabis. A lot of times when individuals have tried cannabis before, there was no regulation before. So no one tested it. No one measured anything. It was pretty much the Wild, Wild West. And that is not the case now. Everything is dosed. Everything is measured. And everything is tested. And those tests are overseen by the state. Here's another great example. A lot of the products that you're gonna see are, are very, are from very well-to-do MSOs, which are the multi-state operators, such as Pop and Barclay. It's a medical brand. It came from medical ti, you know, our medical time of regulation and has now translated their business into adult-use business. But they do a lot of topicals, tinctures. They really concentrate on the wellness properties of the plant and also helping seniors and others who have medical conditions. This next slide is Calma. Calma is in West Hollywood. West Hollywood has a very, very detailed and very specific ordinance on how cannabis, commercial cannabis can operate in their city. And the city council here has had lots of conversations around West Hollywood. So we only thought it fitting to show some of the stores there. So you can get an idea of what some of the stores here could look like. Again, once again, these are very, you know, beautiful architecture, beautiful interior design. Not every storefront is going to have, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars for redevelop, or redeveloping a building. But you definitely can have development standards and beautification standards that will help put, put some good businesses in some of the empty, empty storefronts in your city. This next picture again is Calma, just from the inside. So you can see kind of what it, what it looks like. That back screen is actually a bunch of TVs. So right now it's showing a forest. But anytime you go in there, there's different calming screens. And so they really do focus on the relaxation and calming properties of cannabis. So let's talk a little bit about the licensing process for Hawthorne in particular. I know it's a, it's a very robust process. And so I like to take them, take time to go through it with the community because it is new and there are a lot of steps. So we'll go through the steps and then after this, we can take some time to kind of delve into each of those and where we are with each of those. And, and I think the, the cannabis working group can kind of take it from there. But the first part of this process, like Tony said, was really those, those legislative actions by the city. And so the city has gotten to a point where we're looking at what the, what the ordinance would look like. You've already passed the tax initiative that said, yes, if cannabis businesses are here, we want them to pay 5% of their gross revenue in, in, in a cannabis tax to the city. So that's already been approved. Now we're gonna be looking at what do operators need to do to be successful in the city of commerce. So the first thing we wanted to start with was the development of the Working Committee and also start with community outreach. So as you can see, we're at the very beginning of this process. And I will turn it over to the chair. Chair Reyes English, so that she can go through where, where we are and where we're going, and then we can circle back.
Thank you so much. And that was, I, in my opinion, a very good overview. And I like the, the timeline. I like the process in which, how we got here. And obviously, it started with the state. And today, we are the Working Group Committee. We've been having meetings every second and fourth Thursday at 11:00 AM. We, we are having those meetings by Zoom. We have the board here, along with the consultants, that we have an agenda that we follow. And we have everything done through the city clerk's office and obviously through postings and notification. At this time, we're, this is the first town hall outreach that we're doing. There's gonna be four in a series. And the reason for that is because, obviously, the stakeholders and the residents of Hawthorne have a stake i, in providing their recommendations, suggestions, opinions, or otherwise. And so it's very important that we get community feedback. And it's good to see that you are here and participating with us today in our, in our first meeting and, more importantly, in our efforts. I wanted to have an opportunity to maybe take a little break in case someone has to use the restrooms or step out for a little bit. I don't wanna inundate everybody with so much information because it is a lot of information. Especially if you're new to cannabis, especially if, if you're just trying to get the information and understand fully what this means for the city of Hawthorne. I wanna be able to also have any other committee members here provide any comments that maybe might, we might have missed, something that's important that we might want to express. I, I just want everybody to be able to have full participation. Is there anything? Good?
I just wanna clarify some of the issues that I've been hearing. And that is the... Can you hear me now? Okay, so I just wanna clarify some of the issues that's been raised by some of the community members. The Oversight Committee here is formed at the direction of a resolution. As direction, it's mainly made up of staff and one council member as a chair, at the direction of City Council. We only have a recommendation power. We, you know, because of our lack of experience in this industry, we went through a full RFP process to hire the consultant. They were vetted in terms of civil background, what type of, you know, judgment and whatnot. And out of the five finalists, the City Council selected one particular consultant to work with the Working Committee. Our first phase is to come up with an ordinance. So what you have is Proposition 64 that legalized cannabis and recreational use of cannabis. Recreational use of cannabis in the state. Then the city passed Measure CC, which allowed taxation of sale of cannabis. Then there were directives from City Council to go through the RFP process to hire a consultant to assist the staff in coming up with the ordinance. Ultimately, it's the City Council that will decide to pass an ordinance that would legalize the retail or various license, however the council may choose to go with in terms of legalizing the sale of business of cannabis in the city. It's not up to the committee. We only have a recommendation power. So, you know, this committee, through the resolution, was recommended because it's mainly made up of staff members. You have the city manager. You have the police department. You have planning and the city attorney's office. So this is one of the first community outreach. But, and this is a place where you could ask questions. But I, I just, and I, I think most, all of our meeting is now posted on YouTube. So there's nothing going on in terms of us working, nor do we have any motive to come up with something behind the scene or behind closed doors. It's all, all out in the open. We follow the Brown Act. So I just wanna put that out there in case there were any misperception or rumors or suspicions that you've been hearing.
Thank you for that. And, you know, I just wanna also add that I was appointed by the mayor. He gave me the appointment as chair. And it was a unanimous vote of the full City Council. So that everyone understands how everyone is put in position, okay? I, I wanna go ahead and start with the, the ordinance portion of it. If we could just talk a little bit more how we're working currently on the ordinance. Yeah, let's, let's just take a, let's take like a real quick five-minute break and we'll come right back. Let's do that. Thank you. Okay, we're back. And we're gonna continue. We're gonna talk a little bit about our city ordinances and how those are being implemented. And I'll go back to the city, excuse me, to our consultants to go ahead and start us off on that. And a lot of this is shared between the Planning Department ordinances and obviously the, the committees. So I'll go ahead and give it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we are right at the pro, process of starting in the very, very beginning of developing an ordinance. And the ordinance is essentially going to set the, the framework for how cannabis will, cannabis businesses will operate in the city, as well as what requirements are necessary to obtain a license here. So I think Robert, the city attorney, has mentioned that no one will be, here on the committee, will be actually making those, or not making those decisions. But the City Council will be making those decisions. But we will write the ordinance that will say, what are the setbacks? Are there setbacks for, for these businesses? Do they need a certain amount of parking? Those, those land use policies around this process is what we're gonna be focusing on. So I wanted to take some time today so that we can go over, you know, the very beginning of, stages of where we are with this, including some of the sensitive uses. And then today, through the FAQ, or I'm sorry, the Q&amp;A process, we'll be able to take any concerns that you have or things that you want us to address in this ordinance. If you are concerned about parking in the neighborhood and having, you know, larger stores, you know, those are the things that we will be able to talk about in the question and answer section. And we're gonna take detailed notes on that. Again, everything from the FAQ, or from the Q&amp;A portion will go in the FAQ that's on the website today. And we'll try to answer those questions as best as possible. Again, if there's anything that you do have, a technical question that perhaps we don't have the answers to for the ordinance, we can always circle back and we'll post that on the website. So the first part of ordinance creation is what we're doing right now. It's really engaging the community and see what your concerns are, things you're interested in knowing about. Ultimately, the license, the, I'm sorry, the ordinance process will be at the hands of the Planning Department. And so Greg, if there's anything that I missed, go ahead and jump in. But the first thing we wanted to tackle were those sensitive uses. So the state defines where you can locate any type of cannabis businesses around schools and daycare centers. And it's 600 feet. So it's a 600-foot radius around any daycare center or school. And so that one is a regulation that we can't admit, we can't make less restrictive. And in fact, all of the state regulations are the baseline of where you can start your ordinance. So you, a city can be more restrictive than the state, but they can't be less restrictive than the state. So if the state says it has to be 600-foot radius, then it has to be a minimum of six. You may see other cities that have 1,000, 1,500, 7 foot, 700 feet. All of those are okay because they are more restrictive than the state. But you can't make them less restrictive than the state. The next thing that we will cover are, all of our SEQA-related issues. So the SEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act. A lot of times when we're talking about cannabis in Southern California, we're talking about infill projects, you know, filling in areas or buildings that have already been previously occupied and used. But in Northern California and some other regions and throughout the country, some of these are new development. They are new builds. And so SEQA definitely applies to all of the projects or anything defined as a project. So we will be looking at any environmental quality issues and addressing those as a way of this ordinance. Also, any zoning. As I think we've talked about earlier, the city does currently have a no cannabis policy. So there's no... So, there's nothing in the city for allowing cannabis businesses at this moment, which is why we're talking about developing an ordinance and zone amendment that would change that. But where they go is really important as a land use professional. So, we're looking at where these businesses will be located in the city. Are we putting retail in commercial zones? And where on commercial zones? Do we have any special restrictions, any special zones that we want to create or develop for cannabis? Cities do it in different ways. A lot of cities more recently are relying on their existing zoning to place cannabis businesses. So, that is one way to do it. Previously, we've seen cities adopt green zones or other cannabis zones where they only want cannabis businesses to be located. There are multiple ways that that can be addressed. But those are some of the things that we'll be talking about biweekly in the Working Group, in the Working Committee. And then, also, developing any development standards. So, like I said before, that would include any parking-related issues. We may increase or decrease parking for these businesses. Obviously, a cultivation facility may be large but not have a lot of employees. And so, because they're not open to the public, we may not have the same parking standard as we would in Amazon that has 2,000 employees. So, those are the types of things that we're going to be looking at. Also, some of those operational standards. Obviously, the state is the baseline. You may want to increase security requirements. You may want to increase some of these other development standards. For example, you may want to require that the businesses select local, you know, hire locally for their business. That's a big one in cannabis. You know, you're coming into the community. We really want to have job creation, so we want to increase jobs. And you can have a mandate that requires operators to look locally before they offer jobs elsewhere within their organization. So, those are some of the things that we're going to be talking about in the Working Committee every other week. What is important to the city and what's important to keep the operators? You want to make sure that they're able to comply with all of these regulations so that they can be successful. Because ultimately, it is a symbiotic relationship between the city and all of your businesses within the city. And so, you want to make sure that they have regulations that they can reasonably comply with and that you have regulations on the books that protect the city's interests and make sure that the operators are operating in a safe manner. So, those are some of the big things that we're going to be talking about through the planning process. And Greg, if there's anything else?
I just want to emphasize that we're at the very beginning stage of this right now. So, what my staff has done recently is we've mapped out the sensitive uses. And we've used the same sensitive uses that the municipal code outlines for alcohol. Those are the only sensitive uses our municipal code has. And we've added them to the sensitive uses that the state mandates.
Could you just elaborate what sensitive uses are?
Yeah, the ones that we've added are adult daycare in addition to child daycare and parks and I think that's schools. We've added all schools for children, meaning parochial schools and religious schools and high schools, all the way down to kindergartens. So, we put them all into a map. And we got that map together just before the last meeting, but there wasn't an opportunity to discuss it. So, that will be presented to the committee at the next meeting, which I believe is a week from next Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And from that, we'll take a look at how these uses are distributed in the city in relation to the commercial, industrial, and residential zones. And then, we'll start looking at what the effects of putting different buffers around them will be. The idea is not to exclude everything, make it impossible, but not to open it up so widely that we're, you know, that we can't control the situation. So, we can't go in with any preconceived notions of where we're going or what we're going to start with. But we're going to take a look at how these different uses are distributed around the city and in relative to the available real estate as well. That's another factor we're going to be looking at. So, that's where we are. We're at the very beginning stages right now. We've got these things mapped now, and we'll be discussing them soon.
Thank you. Let me pass it over to City Attorney Kemp for our Oversight Committee overview on that.
Thank you. So, the way we're creating this cannabis program for the city, I think it's kind of unique because we don't have any experience in this. So, can you all hear? So, because it's a new venture for us and we lack experience, at the very beginning, we felt that transparency is the primary goal for the staff and the members here. So, what we envision is first, we have the Working Committee, but there will be two additional committees. And we're all, each of these committees are going to be transparent and follow the Brown Act. The second committee will be the Oversight Committee. The Oversight Committee will have policies to make sure that there's no underhanded business going on, no activity behind the closed doors, things of that nature. We haven't completely came up with all the policies yet, but that will be another committee that will be formed. The third committee will be the Licensing Committee. These will be made up of what members may be, it's down the road. And the Licensing Committee will have the recommendation power for people who are applying to get licensed if we get there. So, and ultimately, all three of these committees, whatever decisions they make, are all just limited to recommendation powers. And ultimately, it's the City Council that will decide who has issued a license, what activity is, did not follow the proper protocol, and therefore, someone, an applicant, may be excluded, things of that nature. So, the Working Committee is the first phase, but there will be two additional committees. And I just want to add something to what was mentioned by Ebony, and that's employment. Mr. Norris, the City Manager and I, we actually took a tour of a very big operation in downtown where they have warehouse. And we got a tour of the number of people working there. And there were hundreds and hundreds of people working there. It's a very large facility. And we learned that each one of those employees are members of a union and that they're provided full benefits, including health insurance. So, it's, I come from a prosecutorial background where we used to prosecute people for simple possession of marijuana. And since, you know, the Proposition 64 passed, it has become decriminalized. But at the same time, I had an open mind, and seeing the possible job opportunities for the city is a major factor. So, I believe it's by, either by law or by industry, that they're required to be, employees are required to be unionized and to receive full benefits. Correct me if I'm wrong with that.
Yes, the state requires that each cannabis operator sign an LPA, which is a labor peace agreement, saying that if their employees choose to unionize, they have to cooperate with that. So, yes, that is a licensing requirement.
So, I don't want to sound like I'm being an advocate here, but I know the misconceptions and the negative attitude comes first because I had that same attitude. But I want to keep an open mind. As part of being a Working Committee is not to be leaning toward one way or the other, but to be impartial. And I think in, at this very beginning phase, I had to take a look at the industry itself and investigate myself in order to have that open mind.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. There's going to be, I believe, a collaboration between the consultants and our City Manager and the committee with regards to the application process. Do you want to speak a little bit about that, Ms. Ebony?
Yes, I would. The application process for any cannabis business is multi-layered. There are a lot of things that both local municipalities and the state require. So, that's the first, I think, mythbuster that you can come in and just get a license and sign up and operate a cannabis business. That's not how it works. It is, it's a very heavily regulated industry, both at your local level and at the state level. So, we like to inform our communities that these operators that are coming in are putting, investing a lot into these businesses. So, the number one thing that they're going to focus on is compliance, right? They want to make sure that they are operating within all of the state requirements, but also all of your local requirements. But in order to even get a license, you have to go through a very detailed application and application process. The application itself will be based on the ordinance. So, you have to be able to demonstrate as an applicant that you can comply with all of those regulations in the ordinance. And that ordinance will be developed, like we said, by your input, as well as the City, the Working Committee, and the City Council will ultimately approve that ordinance. So, the application is required to even get into the door. The application does have a fee, so they pay to apply. They also are required to demonstrate that they are in good financial health, that these are businesses that can operate and stay profitable. They are also, the applicants are also required to demonstrate their knowledge of that ordinance and other existing and related city municipal codes that will apply to their project. For example, the building department still exists. You still have to go get your planning approvals, and you also have to see the building department. So, operators aren't just allowed to come in and build whatever they want, however they want, which is happening in the unregulated industry, which is why the state has such a push for regulation. Because if you have operators that do not have licensed businesses, they're able to circumvent all of those city regulatory bodies, like the fire department. The fire department doesn't oversee non-licensed cannabis activities. So, it's really important that the application capture all of those requirements and those things that are necessary to operate a business, even if it wasn't cannabis. So, we treat cannabis application process like any other planning development project. So, if you were coming to put in a mall or attract homes, you would still go through this same planning process, and cannabis is no different. Now, the things that we want to examine for these businesses may be slightly different, but ultimately, the process is the same. So, the application is the city's way of asking anybody who wants to apply for these licenses how they're going to meet the standards of the city. The next part of that process will be the permitting process. So, if you are an applicant and you apply for a license in the city, you will then get screened based on your ability to perform in the city and meet those standards. You have to have a complete application, just like you would with any other development application in the city. You need to be able to have a team that can help you create this business and make sure that you're staying in compliance. And once you get through that process and the city will be filtering out those applicants that do not meet the basic minimum eligibility to move forward. But those who do will go through the permit process. So, the permit process in the city of Hawthorne is very similar to most cities. You're going to have some type of planning approval, which means that someone from the city is going to go out and make sure that these operators are in locations that meet their zoning. So, there'll be zoning verifications done. There's initial building inspections that are done to make sure that they're in buildings that have either previously been occupied, or if they haven't, that we're looking at that as a change of use. There are a lot of different agencies involved in selecting these locations. You know, it may be something that even possibly goes to the Planning Commission or ultimately, it will end up at City Council. We haven't developed the process yet, but we have been working really close with the Planning Department. And the Planning Director will be heavily involved in this process to ensure that this process mirrors any other city process and that we're complying with all of the requirements of the municipal code. And then, finally, you'll go into the facility construction phase, and that's when we'll be seeing building permits being pulled. Again, cannabis operators still have to go through the building process. I think it's really important to say that because early on, when we did licensing and we would have these town hall meetings, a lot of times, even operators weren't aware of all of the requirements to operate legally within a city. And the Planning Department is a very big part of that, as well as our building department. So, all of the building officials will be involved in overseeing the building process for these facilities. That means the fire department will also be involved in this process to ensure that all of the facilities are created in a safe way and meet all of the business building codes and fire codes. And then, finally, once you've gone through all of that process, and this process does take some time. It's not a very short process. It's not something that you can do over the counter. It's not an over-the-counter permit. It's a very robust development application and process. And so, once you get through building and safety, then we're going to go into operation. And before you can even operate as a cannabis operator, there is a lot of pre-operational requirements you have to meet. And those, again, will be spelled out in the ordinance, but some of them include just a pre-operational inspection. You know, the city is going to want to make sure that these operators are compliant, both with the state regulations and their city regulations. So, there will be pre-operational inspections that will be done by the city. And all of these operators will be required to have regular contact with the city staff because there will be monitoring of all of the businesses.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Anderson. And just to add to the application process, I know that the City Council and this committee is committed to assure that the businesses that are applying have a commitment to contribute back to the community through community benefits. And so, that's something that we're going to be looking at with regards to commitments from those businesses to assure that there's an annual benefit to the community in ways of, it could be, say, for instance, scholarships. It could be donations to a nonprofit organization. It could be to assist a school. It could be to assist a nonprofit organization. There's many commitments that we're looking for from businesses to be good partners. And so, thank you for the overview on that. I want to be open to questions. Initially, we had put little three-by-five cards at your seat, but considering the number of people we have here, I'll go ahead and ask if there's any questions that you might have in the audience to please go to one of the podiums. There's a mic here, there's a mic there, and we're going to give you three minutes to speak. And then, I'll address those questions based on the question to the appropriate person to answer that question for you. Just at any mic. And if you did fill out a question on a three-by-five card, just raise it up, and I'll ask, have staff to pick those up from you. There's one in the back. If I could have staff take, pick up the three-by-five cards and bring them to the front for Vaughn, please.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, Mr. Kemp, it is, you are very quiet.
You want to go ahead here to my right?
I actually will give our senior friend here the opportunity.
Is that me?
Go ahead.
You folks are very professional. I mean, I was very impressed with the comprehensiveness of your report. And if everything you said was true, and I know the committee's trying, I would say, let's go for it. But the problem is, before I knew that we were going through with this, I saw on TV reports on TV news that the crime rate increases whenever there's dispensaries allowed in a certain area. And I did personal research. I'm a history buff. And I went ahead and as I did research, I was very careful on trying to be selective on making sure that I wasn't, you know, I was being on objective reports. And every, Denver, I have friends in Denver, but Denver, Oregon, San Francisco, Oakland, they all show crime increases when dispensaries are allowed. Now, I know the rules and regulations are strong, but then again, Daily Breeze had a report in about a month ago that about 30% of all the dispensaries and things don't follow the rules. They kind of like bend them a little bit when they can. So, and I know that, you know, if you're not watching them right away, you can't pay attention to it. And so, bottom line is, I'm worried about the crime going up in the neighborhood. And then, when I went along my street, and I've said this before in front of the committee, nobody was aware that we're going to be doing this. So, why are we spending all this time and money without? People may, our citizens, your citizens, may not even want this sort of thing, knowing that the repercussions are out there. And again, you know, it's the crime thing that bothers me more than anything. If everything was, what you said was the way it was going to go, you know? But then again, my hippie days tell me that I don't like marijuana only because it does have a degenerative effect on the brain and it's medically proven for recreational use. So, thank you. I think, I don't know if I'm past the three minutes yet.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I'd just like to have a little bit more concern about what it's going to do to our community.
Thank you.
Do you want to answer some of the questions?
Yes. I can address a couple of those things. I'm not sure what research you did, so just bear with me on what we have. Um, I, I, I'm not sure what research you did, so, so just bear with me on what we have. Um, the statistics that we pulled were from the, the departments that, the police departments that, um, were listed, um, but they were specifically on violent crimes. So, theft, they, they may not consider theft a violent crime. We have seen theft in Oakland. Um, you know, there's going to be theft for a lot of different uses, so that, that very much well is the case. Um, we are not saying that there's no crime or there's zero crime because of cannabis, but, um, a lot of them are the operators being victimized. It's not them victimizing anybody. So, there's that. Um, also, you know, the statistics are always tough because no matter who's writing them, um, they may not present the full picture, so we acknowledge that and we're pulling, you know, we're pulling from what we have available as well. Um, also, thirty percent of, I think you said thirty percent of the industry is not following regulations. Again, those statistics can be misleading because we don't know what, th- this is a heavily regulated industry and they could be small violations as well. Um, so, it's kind of difficult when you're, you have to remember that we're pulling in an entire industry that hasn't been regulated for hundreds of years, and now we're saying, now do all of these things perfectly. We're not going to always have a perfect process, but we are definitely trying to create regulations that, um, really do protect the community in interests. And so, I think the city has done a great job, um, putting the community interests first. So, I don't think that that's going to change, and I, you know, I appreciate you standing up and giving, um, you know, all of that information that you found because it's really important for everybody to do their research. Um, but overall, we have, even with thirty percent of operators having some, some infraction, it could be very small, there are very, very, um, there are very complex regulations, um, but even that, you're going to see those types of violations in every industry. If we took restaurants, for example, I guarantee you, you can drive to any restaurant right now and they don't all have As, which means there's some regulation that they didn't follow. So, I just want to put that out there because sometimes we have a lot of, um, concern, and rightfully so for cannabis, um, but they operate a lot like other businesses, and so, we have to give them some opportunity to correct those violations, um, or correct those infractions. Um, but we really overall are seeing a lot of large operators, especially MSOs, that are not, their, their first and foremost, um, I think their first and foremost concern is being compliant.
And just to add to that, the state really has an interest with cracking down on non-licensed cannabis businesses. The illegal market is a nine, an over a nine billion dollar industry in Los Angeles. And so, of course, license holders want to make sure that those businesses get shut down. The state is really cracking down, having more penalties. I worked for the city of Los Angeles as well, and they're doing something that is very creative. They are going after dispensary owners as well as the landlords under a product liability, um, cause of action. Basically, after 2018, all cannabis has to be tested. If you're in a, uh, unregulated market, your cannabis isn't tested, and so, that can be a product liability lawsuit. So, the city, the main city of Los Angeles, the state is really trying to crack, uh, crack down on all of this and really get it under control, but I definitely understand where you're coming from.
Thank you so much.
So, I just want to say the, just kind of, uh, catapult to what Doug was saying. Um, you know, the information that you brought in is a little bit old. I mean, two thousand and fourteen. They've already passed recreational marijuana, uh, in the, in, in Los Angeles or LA County. So, I would think that you guys would have more recent information, because the information that you guys shared was two thousand and fourteen. They passed recreation in two thousand and nineteen?
Well, I just want to clarify, they just passed LA County three days ago, or four days ago. It has been illegal in LA County, not city, but the county. As of last week, it just got permitted.
Well, I'm talk- I'm talking about the, the recreational marijuana that had been passed?
Oh, I'm talking about adult use also. It was not legal in LA County.
Well, wasn't that Proposition sixty-four that passed in two thousand and nineteen?
Proposition sixty-four passed in twenty sixteen, and it had to do with the state. And we were talking about
Right, so, so, so recreational mari- I don't want to make this into
Okay.
Back and forth, but I'm just saying that recreational marijuana has passed?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. And I'm saying that, uh, out of all the cities that you guys named, the South Bay has said no to cannabis.
Correct.
So, I don't know what, are the people from Hermosa, are the people from El Segundo, are the people from Edondo Beach, are they, are they seeing something that we're not seeing? I mean, I just
Gotham is there?
Yeah, Gotham is, is Gotham's okay?
Well, I don't think it's part of the South Bay, but that, that's a, that's another idea. I'm saying that, uh, you know, why does Hawthorne has to be the first one? That's all I'm saying. Um, I also want to, I just, I should have just started off by saying that your, your website, uh, it was very difficult, uh, to, to, to get some of our members. Uh, a lot of them didn't, like you guys have promised that you guys were going to have the registration on Monday. It wasn't done. I would, I would recommend that, you know, we, we have some type of, uh, I don't know, some type of service for our, our seniors who don't have a computer to maybe, they could call in and, and voice their opinions, because a lot of them don't even know what a Zoom is. So, i- if we could do something like that, that would be great
Thank you so much.
To the ad hoc committee.
Thank you so much. Your, your three minutes are up.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Well
I'll ask the next speaker, please.
Um, well, okay.
I, I would just like to just
Well, that's, thank you, all right.
I would just like to clarify, the statistics on crime were from Denver, and the reason why we use Denver, Washington, Oregon is because they had recreational use first, and so that they have a longer history of data. Um, like Tony said, a lot of the cities within Los Angeles County, or even a lot of the Southern California cities, don't allow retail. Um, so, we had to pull from cities that do allow retail and that have at least a five, six-year track record of those crime statistics. Um, we weren't able to pull them from L- the LA Sheriff's Department, um, but we definitely hear you and we will update once we get those numbers from the, the LA Sheriff's Department.
Ben, Jeff, Jeff, can you put the handle of the cities that happen out?
Oh, yeah, thank you. And, and, and once again, the, the proposition was passed by the voters in November of two thousand and twenty. Uh, go ahead, next question.
Okay, so, I want to start by addressing my concern. Um, I'm a mother of a twenty-year-old and a mother of a twenty-two-year-old. As a parent, this is not acceptable on any grounds. How can you stand here and tell me that this program is going to contribute back to the society and to our city by scholarship? So, what kind of message am I sending to the younger ones? Am I sending a message where, yeah, you could smoke weed when you're an adult, but we're going to use some of that tax money to pay for your education, to help support your school? Like, I'm just baffled by that. Uh, another thing, mental health and the homelessness problem, most of those mental health patients are addicted to some sort of drug. Why are we bringing this to our city? Like, seriously, I'm just so insulted. I stood, I stood in front of Northgate Market on Rose Crowns and Prairie and collected signatures. In thirty minutes, I collected forty signatures of all parents concerned. Let me tell you why they're not here. Simply because they don't trust our city officials that have been here in the past, because they do what they want to do anyways, because the people of Hawthorne are not being heard. I live here, I live across the street from this park. When, before I moved here, I was told, oh, you should never look for a place east of Prairie. Why? This city is only six miles square, and when you have the audacity to say, oh, let's place those weed shops on the outskirts, on the outskirts of what, six miles? Please. You guys know better than this. Be a little more sophisticated. Do we want to be like the cities that have pot shops in their ci- in their towns, or do we want to be like the upper class that don't have it? Why hurt our own communities? Why hurt the brown and black communities even more? I'm done with this. I am done with this. If I have to go collect signatures, door to door, I will do that. When you guys proposed the eighty-one forty-eighth, it was for the tax measure, not for pot shops.
I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Kim to answer some of those questions.
So, I want to, so, I, I just want to, uh, answer, and you know, I understand your concern as a parent, I'm a parent myself, um, but this committee here, or the consultants, are not the group that's going to pass this law. We had in November of two thousand and twenty, Measure CC was passed. That measure, voted by sixty-one percent of the residents here, wanted a sales tax of five percent on marijuana retail business. Since then, we're taking directives from council to look into the ordinance. This committee does not have that kind of authority. I just want to remind you again, we're not here to make the laws for the city residents. We're here to propose and following the directive of the city council. So, it's the city council that will have the ultimate decision in whether to allow legal, legal business of cannabis in the city. And it's not just in the outskirts, it, it, we, we have to look at the sensitive zone, that's what we, we've been just talking about here. Okay, so, I, I just don't want, I get, I've been hearing some of these frustrations and angers pointed at the working committee when we are just a group, we are the working committee trying to come up with the language to be proposed to city council. We, we're not here to make the laws for you, for the city.
And I would just like to point out, I totally understand your concern. I, I am a parent as well, of a small child, and so, I one hundred percent understand, um, the sensitivity behind having cannabis in, in children and the messages we're sending to them. I, I want you to know that. Um, but I think it's important also to mention, um, that there is a way for us to entertain what the council has put before us, to find these policies, and that's why we're here and we want to hear from, um, all of you, because we need to understand what those specific concerns are so that we can create policies that can help address them. Um, we can't solve every problem, but we definitely can implement things in that ordinance that help prevent, you know, seeing these shops next, next to schools or on the path of travel, you know, where kids are going to school. I totally understand those, um, concerns. I also wanted to talk about, um, you know, why we have cannabis retail or even other activities in communities of color, because I, I think your point is spot on. We don't see them in a lot of, you know, more affluent communities, or what we assume are more affluent communities, but they are coming on board. I think we're seeing, we saw the city of Avalon, we see Malibu, where you're seeing more and more, um, um, more, more
Please don't interrupt. Thank you.
There, there are
Go ahead.
There are, there are, um, retail locations in Malibu. And so, when we're talking about this, it is definitely one hundred percent a concern for, I think, everybody here, um, to look at how the war on drugs affected our communities and then how we can now take back that, um, you know, take back, take back the community and do what's best for them. And I think that that's what we're all aiming to do here, is trying to find the most equitable policies possible for the city of Hawthorne.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Go ahead with your question.
Uh, yes, I'm a res- a citizen of, uh, this, uh, this, uh, city for a long time, more than forty years, and, um, I do care about this city very much, it's my city. And, uh, I know you're inviting the public to come and express what they feel about this. I feel that I, we should not have those stores in the city. Uh, I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything, I'm just expressing my opinion. Uh, I was a teacher for thirty-nine years, I know what can do to children, and I, I disagree with having it here. Uh, we've been presented with many ideas through the years in this city, and one of them was gambling, and we decided that it was not for our city, that we didn't want that here. And it was presented in a very, very convincing way because of the money that we'll make. And I know these businesses will make money, and I know that's the bottom line sometimes. And I know that the people voted to tax, yes, if you get it, you should tax it, because somebody has to get some benefit. But do I want it as a citizen of this city? No, I don't. I don't care how many cities have it. I don't. As a woman, as a mother, as a former teacher, I don't want that in the city. And I, I'm here to express my opinion, and that's how I feel. I know it's bringing money, I know all that, but I do not want it in my city. And I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not accusing anybody. I think it's your obligation to bring it to the public, but I'm the public, and that's how I feel.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right here to my left?
Hello. Uh, first off, just want to say thank you to the committee for doing this work. Thank you guys for being here to share with the public, we really do appreciate that. I think you guys did a great job in actually trying to make sure that the public are here and giving their input, and that kind of gets to the root of the question I want to ask, just to the end of, I didn't catch her name, but the end of her comment. A lot of what you're mentioning is about how the city council will make the last decision. Uh, we did, city did vote on approving the tax. Is there any part of legislation or process that would allow the community to just vote on whether or not they would like to have retail, as in, as in, kind of a way to take this out of city council or your hands? So, it says the city comes in and goes, we would like to have this or we wouldn't. I understand making a ballot initiative is an expensive process, but I was just wondering if that was something we had explored or a way that we could possibly alleviate some of the issues where people, some of the concerns the community's feeling.
By the way, that's a very, uh, good question and a very tough question. Um, the, 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 in terms of the laws, when it comes to tax, it has to go through a measure, so that's why it was done. Um, by the way, um, I read in Daily Breeze article that city of Hermosa Beach will have a measure to have sales tax for cannabis this coming election. Um, now, in terms of giving, taking away that authority from the city council, um, it's possible the city council can discuss whether they want to put a measure like that to, to do that or not, um, that's up to the council to vote on that, but i- in terms of the laws, the current laws as it, as it exists, the state since Proposition sixty-four has allowed legalized cannabis in the whole state of California, and in terms of ordinance, that's what the city is doing. Traditionally, passing an ordinance is up to the city council, that's a municipal affair, that's local affair. So, since the state law authorizes it, it's up to city council to pass an ordinance to allow retail commercial business in the city, and that's why you have elected officials. So, does the city council have to take it to a measure for the voters? No, they do not. It's, it's the ordinance.
Thank you so much. I'm going to con- conclude. You have one? Okay.
Thank you, I was waiting to see if anyone else had questions. So, thank you to the committee for doing this work, and thank you to our consultants, appreciate it. My question is about sensitive uses. Um, I understand the sensitive use is based on Prop sixty-four, but are you also looking at sensi- I guess this basically is, is a question for our planning director. Are, are you looking at sensitive uses at the Ocean Gate Center, um, Costco Center? Uh, are you coordinating with the police considering sensitive uses or, uh, not putting sensitive use, not putting those, uh, retail establishments near any high crime areas? Are you also looking at, um, considering addiction centers and places like that, sensitive uses? So, I, I want to make sure that when you say sensitive uses, we're considering all the places in Hawthorne that we might want to restrict cannabis use.
The addiction centers, yes, they, they, they are also included. I, I knew there was another one, thank you for reminding me. Um, I'm not sure how you are considering Ocean Gate Center and, um, Costco as a sensitive use, um, unless you're referring to them as crime areas?
No, no, not crime areas, but, but as, as places where you wouldn't necessarily want a cannabis business.
Yeah, the way to do that would be through the zoning, and we could, we could certainly look at it as a zoning exclusion area. Um, I wouldn't want to call that a, a sensitive use because it would be hard to define it as different than other places in the same zone, but, uh, it's possible to exclude those areas, but that, that's not, um, part of the intention at this point, um, because on, on their face, they don't, they don't stand out as particularly different than other shopping areas.
shopping areas. Um, but, we are looking at all options.
Are, are you also looking at not placing them in what the police department would consider high crime areas?
No, I'm glad you pointed that out, because that's something that we should consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, and I'm just going to just make mention, that's why it's important for us to have a police officer on the board.
Yeah.
So, with that, I am thankful to everyone that attended here, thank you for our consultants, for your participation, thank you to the audience watching today on Channel twenty-two, Channel twenty-two. Uh, you're, you're valued, and we, and your input is very important, and I want to just acknowledge those that are viewing, uh, this proceeding today. I'll go ahead and adjourn today's meeting, the time now is, uh, ten, excuse me, three fifty. Thank you so much, have a good day. Two fifty? Three fifty? Three fifty, what is it? Two fifty.